Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
Acting City Manager Kanopki.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve of the Constitution and its corals.
At this time, we will remove the public bid award will be removed to our regular item 12C. Our regular commission meeting for February 24th has been received. Do we have any comments? If not, the meetings will be received. Administrative meetings for February 19th were received. Any comments? And our special city commission meeting of January 13th has been received. Do we have any comments? Okay, Madam Clerk. Board appointments, 10 miles Helena Forest Restoration. Where is that? I'm recommending the following board appointment. 10 miles South Helena Forest Restoration Collaborative Committee. Appointment of Paul Ferry as a representative of the conservation organization. Term begins upon appointment and ends September 11, 2020.
Mayor, I'll move to appoint Paul Ferry as representative of a conservation organization. Term begins upon appointment and ends on September 11, 2020.
Second.
It's been moving seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Consent agenda claims.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have two sets of claims. One for the week ending on February 21st in the amount of $238,698.55. And the week ending in February 28, 2020, in the amount of $481,691.92 for a total of $720,390.47.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd move approval of consent agenda. Item A, claims and Item B, revised special warranty deed in the development agreement attendant to the sale of property located at 630 Last Chance Gulch.
At this time, we're entertaining public comments. No public comments.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Bid award, bid award for the West Side Tank Replacement City Project. City Engineer Ryan Leland.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. This is to replace a failed tank, or it's not totally failed, but a damaged tank that we have on the west side. It's above La Grande. It was installed by a developer roughly 10 years ago. And there's a center column in this type of tank. And the ice caused damage, causing the roof to sort of cave in. We went out to see what it would have cost to just repair the tank. And it was pretty much the same as replacing the full tank itself. And we were more comfortable with going with a total tank replacement because we don't know how the tank was really going to act once the damaged portion was pulled off because it is just bolted steel tank. So then we went out for a bid for two different style tanks. A steel tank that was going to be glass lined and then a concrete tank. The concrete tank is a superior tank, lasts longer, has a longer lifespan. It'll be here, won't have the damage of the ice and is more seismic resistant. So we went out for both of those in competitive bids and we got a really good bid for the concrete tank and a pretty decent bid for the steel tank. But talking to the superintendent and Public Works, or the acting Public Works Director at the time with a consultant, we decided that economically, doing life cycle analysis, it is going to be better to get a concrete tank than to go with the steel tank. So our recommendation is to award the concrete tank to Hard Rock Road Building and Utility in the amount of $1,020,000. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any comments from the Commission? Public comments? Any comments from the Commission?
Mayor, I'll move to award the West Side Tank Replacement City Project #19-16 to Hard Rock Road Building and Utilities in the amount of $1,020,000. Second.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing. There was one person whose hand went up with regard to public comment that I'm not sure understood to come to the mic.
I apologize. Would you come up, please, ma'am? I apologize, I didn't see your hand.
Considering the cost of it.
What you have to do, ma'am, is call your name and your address for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Diane Anders, 703 Ninth Avenue, here in Helena.
Okay.
Just considering the cost of it, how essential is it to replace?
Mr. Leland.
Mayor, Commission, we have to replace it. The top of the tank is caving in and there is not an option to repair it at this, or the cost to repair it is almost the exact same as replacing it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. You know, I'll still come back to you. You don't seem...
Same person, same man. This is my first time being here.
And that's okay, ma'am.
What is, I mean, is the tank? I guess my question was, what is it for? Is it for something so essential? Because, oh, I guess it's important. Because taxpayers will end up covering that, right? Or is that something in the city?
No, we won't add anything to your bill.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Communications from the Commission. Any Comis- What's that? Oh. Sorry. Bid award for fire hydrant replacement project.
I think we need a vote on the last one, though.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure if it was moved. Was there a motion?
Madam Clerk, I made the motion and I believe it was seconded. I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Halliday? Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, Commission, this is to do a bid award for various hydrants around the city. We have 26 different hydrants that is either non-functioning or outdated. So we have some hydrants that need to be replaced. So we put a project together with 26 different hydrants all over the city to go in and replace them with current and functioning hydrants. And so we went out to bid and we got a low bid by Montana Underground for a cost of If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments from the Commission?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. What fund does this come out of? And was it in the FY '20 and '21 budget?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, is that this, it comes out of the Water Maintenance, Utility Maintenance Fund. So it's the water fund in general that it's going to come out of. It did come out of the '20 budget. It is underneath priority main replacement project. So this is a pretty important project, just to be able to get some fire flow back in functioning hydrants. So we are not, not a budget amendment or anything. We're just using that money. I think it was a million dollars to be able to fund this portion of it.
Public comments? Did you raise your hand again?
Sorry, my last time up. For 26 hydrants, is there really 360? It's like $10,000 a hydrant. And I assume that will come out of our taxes. Question, is there any other way to get it done besides contracting it out at that cost? Because we'll be paying for it. The city, the people living in town will be paying for that for the most part, in time. I'm talking like next year or the year after.
No?
No?
Mr. Leland, would you explain, please?
My understanding was that this would be coming out and it was a pretty relatively high, sounds like a high cost for 26. Yeah, please explain, thanks.
Mayor, Commission, they are 26 hydrants. It is, it's pretty involved to be able to get to these hydrants. They are not the most simple, simplest hydrants to replace. One of them is on the walking mall. A lot of them are near ADA ramps. And so along with getting this replaced, we are replacing a lot of valves that we need to, non-functioning valves, to be able to isolate the hydrants that are out there. We'll be replacing ADA ramps to current standards on any of them that we do tear up. There'll be street reconstruction just in the section of the hydrant that it's going to go through. And then this is off of the utility bill. So the funds will not be coming off your taxes. It'll be coming off your utility bill. So anyone that is paying water, so it's your water bill, is where these funds are associated. So I can go more into depth into it if you'd like, or if that explains it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Any motion?
Mayor, I'd move to award the fire hydrant replacement project #19-26 to the lowest responsible bidder, Montana Underground Construction, Inc., in the amount of $351,902.
Second.
It's been moving seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from Commissioners.
Sure, I have one tonight, Mr. Mayor. And maybe I could ask Ms. Baumeister and her students to come on down, if that's okay, for a couple of minutes? So by way of brief background while they're making their way up here, last, gosh, was it Wednesday? Tuesday, thank you. They all blend together these days. Myself and Pat Judge and a few other individuals had the opportunity to observe these students give presentations regarding sustainable renewable energy projects. And they've done a couple of others, I think, at this point. They've been working hard on them for about two months now. And they were supposed to be heading out this week, I think, to present at the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Unfortunately, with coronavirus, it has been canceled. And so I was hoping at least we would be a poor substitute here at the Commission to recognize their efforts. And I will stop talking and turn it over to Ms. Baumeister and any of the students to talk a little bit more in depth on what they've done.
And this is my first time, so I don't know if we should be facing this way.
Would you please use the microphone, ma'am?
Of course, yes.
And would you introduce yourself and your address for the record?
Sure, so my name is Mary Ann Baumeister and I'm representing Ray Bjork Learning Center, which is located at 1600 Eighth Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, so I am the peak gifted and talented teacher at Ray Bjork. I teach fourth grade and also high school. And this past unit has been really exciting, working with these kids. And I'd like them to actually tell all of you a little bit more about what they've been doing.
Hi, do I have to state my name and address for the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Berkeley Campbell Woods. I live at 18 South Harrison in Helena. So this is the Peak Group and we're a group of gifted and talented students that was tested in the Helena School District. This past unit, we've been working on Global Solutions for Montana Mines, a project where we focus on developing solutions or spreading information about how to work on climate change and global warming as it is currently. This is Georgia, Ryan, Sala, Ella, Daniel, Robin, Ben, Remy, Asher, and Lucy. And is anyone not here with us today? Lucas is currently unavailable, but we've been working to develop this curriculum, kind of, to show to a college as well as at this fair, where there would be 40 or 39 other groups presenting on other current issues affecting our globe today.
Do I also need to state my name?
Yes, please.
Robin Trem, 9 Crossfire Drive, Clancy, Montana. So like Berkeley had said, we were able to give this opportunity to be able to have an impact on this world for what we've been taught. And so Mrs. Baumeister gave us this opportunity and she said, pick a topic and then divide yourselves up into groups. And we chose energy, because there's a lot of energy needs in this world. So we had hydropower, we had acidity of oceans, we had energy in urban areas, and we had false information about renewable energy. And we all split up into groups and we were chosen to present the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which was wonderful and U-Dub, but unfortunately, due to conditions, we cannot do that. Thank you for your recognition.
You're done?
Yeah, we're done.
Well, before you, oh, what did you say? Before you leave, Commissioners, anybody want to give word of wisdom?
Mr. Mayor, I will just say, when I was there, they had the horribly daunting task of doing this presentation, not just for a panel of people who were called experts, sitting up there staring at them that they had to present to, but then also their parents as well, sitting there. They did absolutely fantastic. And it's a pity it's been canceled for now and let's all hope that the fair goes on in the future. You guys did great and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Don't you go yet. Well, on behalf of the Commission, we want to thank you for what you've done. You know, you're the second group in two weeks. I mean, something's happening here in Helena, Montana. Last week, we had a robotics group that's going national. And this week, we've got you guys. So we appreciate what you're doing and thank you. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other communications from the Commission? Okay. Report from the City Attorney.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, nothing to report and nothing to discuss for litigation strategy tonight.
Thank you. Report from the City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ben Kennedy, 2123 East Broadway Street. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Just a couple of things to note from our end. We wanted to thank Commissioner Dean and Chris Kui for attending our last meeting. We wanted to also note that Helena Citizens Council's support for the Conservation Boards' recommend, excuse me, recommendation to update the Helena growth policy, which we'll be voting on, looks like the 23rd of March. Lastly, Helena Citizens Council established a Budget Review Committee. And we will be reviewing year two of the city's budget and providing formal feedback to the group later this spring.
Thank you. Regular items. Consider a resolution of intent to repeal 2011 City of Helena growth policy and adopt 2019 City of Helena growth policy and set a public hearing date of March 23, 2020. Community Development Director, Ms. Hogan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Sharon Hogan. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Helena. And with me, I have Michael McConnell, one of our planners, and Lucy Morell Gengler. And Michael and Lucy were the two primary people who took us through the growth policy process. And so with your permission, I will ask Michael to do a presentation for this resolution of intent.
Okay, Mayor Commissioners, we're here to adopt a resolution of intent to repeal the 2011 City of Helena growth policy and adopt the 2019 update. The adoption of the 2019 update will include the all previously approved amendments, including the downtown neighborhood plan. Growth policies per Montana state law are not regulatory in nature. Rather, growth policies is a guiding document for the general development of a specific geographic area. State law lists the topics that a growth policy must cover, though the extent to which jurisdiction covers those topics is largely up to them. For example, our growth policy covers topics such as housing, economic development, natural resources, in much greater detail than it covers, say, sand and gravel resources. Though as the staff report will show, this process is and has been in compliance with all state law. Public comment and input is the cornerstone of any planning process, and this growth policy is no different. From the outset, we sought innovative and effective ways to seek and implement public input. We chose our consultant based on their public outreach approach, which focused on really going to where people gather and pursuing that input. The foundation of the public process was a four-day intensive visioning studio. This event was held in a storefront on the walking mall and it also included a very well-attended First Friday event. We also attended farmers markets, the HBA home show. We asked any group that would have us to make a presentation at their, at their regular meeting, including Helena Young Professionals, various trade groups, and different activity-based groups. Finally, we held a series of pop-up studios at various locations around the community, including Anchor Park, Van's Grocery Store, among others. We also had a social media presence and all materials and documents that were produced by this process are available online. So as an update, we recognize that there was still value in the 2011 document, though in most cases, the information was out of date. So all chapter data and information was updated as necessary. The chapters were also reorganized, in some cases consolidated, to make the document more intuitive and user-friendly. An implementation matrix was included. So through this mechanism, city departments should be better able to organize key stakeholders, have a more clear direction when facilitating the public process, and also be better able to coordinate with neighboring jurisdictions and agencies. There were some edits received and they're recommended from the Planning Board public hearing. They generally reinforce the city's commitment to combating climate change and bolster our commitment to reducing solid waste. Neighborhood centers, some more compact place-based development paradigm that was proposed and favored by most throughout the public process. This model focuses city assets, potentially provides more goods and services closer to existing neighborhoods, and encourages a greater degree of public input throughout the planning process. You can see on the map there, there's several circles. These represent areas of the city that either have a neighborhood plan in place now or one in process. Others will be added as we complete neighborhood plans. In order to show the realities of growth happening adjacent to city limits, the urban standards boundary was also changed. In addition to indicating properties that are ideal for annexation, this boundary represents an area where joint city-county development standards should be encouraged. This effort has been highlighted to a greater degree than in 2011 with specific implementation actions to support the creation. The boundary now extends to Sierra Road. It is consistent with the JLU study area around Fort Harrison, as well as some minor changes generally along the city's southern limits. These are some examples of implementation actions that this growth policy is proposing. In total, there are 47, so this is a very small sample. They're organized into ongoing, short, medium, and long term. Neighborhood planning is a main component of this update and we have given some thought as to how we might select those areas. We want the process to be resident-driven and express broad community support. So these are some potential steps that a neighborhood group might take in order to initiate a neighborhood planning process. These are, these are very preliminary, so expect them to change over time. With that, I'd just like to take a moment to thank everyone who's been involved in the process. Members of the Planning Board, some of which are here tonight, members of the working group, different city staff, all of the different stakeholders that have been involved, and finally, the members of the public who took time out of their schedules to, you know, provide the vital comments and feedback we needed to make this project a success. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution of intent with a public hearing date of March 23. If there is any discussion or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Public comments? Commissioners? Oh, please.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Greg Wirth, W-I-R-T-H. I reside at 501 State Street here in Helena. And I'd like to express my appreciation for the city to preparing the growth policy. I've attended several of the meetings, saw several of them in numerous areas around town. In my review of the growth policy, I just wanted to point out one item that's a little bit kind of hidden in there. And, you know, the Helena economy is primarily, predominantly, you know, a public sector economy. But when you look at the projected growth, you know, it's all going to be private sector growth. So, you know, in reading that, you know, the city's going to need to be, you know, proactive, responsive, business-friendly, you know, to implement the growth policy. It's going to be private sector growth. And this is addressed, you know, in Chapter Nine, you know, the highlighted objectives is, you know, continue to improve permitting for new development, provide timely, professional and efficient processing of building permits, development review, code administration. And I think these are excellent objectives. I would suggest that maybe these would be translated, articulated into action items as well, because they're paramount in implementing the growth policy. I really agree. I appreciate the goals, objective, action structure of the growth policy. When you put together a strategic plan, you always want action items. So you have a metric to, you know, track your progress and to know in five, 10 years, have we satisfied the ideals of the growth policy? So with that, again, I'd like to thank you for the city of Helena in this effort and appreciate all the effort that goes into this and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, I just have one comment before and I'll be happy to make the motion. I just first want to say thank you so much to staff. I think I had the opportunity to go to a number of these sessions back in the summer before I was on this Commission. And I think it was one of the more gratifying experiences I've ever had as a citizen, where you actually get a chance to work with your neighbors and meeting new people to put together a plan that you know will impact Helena. I think one of the biggest things after- a plan that you know will impact Helena. I think one of the biggest things after our March 23rd meeting will be to make sure that we are moving in a way that this is a real governing document, and that we are acting on the actions that are within this document. And so thank you so much to staff, and thanks to all of the members of the community that participated in this very robust process.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, for either Ms. Hoggan or Mr. McConnell. Just, neither one of you can answer it. Since our package doesn't have the full growth plan in it, if anyone watching, either in the audience tonight or on TV, doesn't know, where can you go to actually look at the entire plan or individual chapters?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you can go on the city's website, helenaMT.gov. Go to the Community Development Department under Current Projects, and the update of the growth policy should be there in its entirety.
Any other comments? Commissioner?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution of intention to repeal the 2011 City of Helena growth policy and adopt the 2019 City of Helena growth policy and set a public hearing date for March 23rd, 2020. Second.
Has been moved in second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget for an increase of 1.3 million. Mr. Cooley?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Evening.
So, for the record, my name is Chris Cooley with the City Finance Office. Tonight, we have for consideration a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget for an increase of $1,399.71. So I'm sure, as you're aware, we've had some updates to this amendment itself, so I'll present it as it was written originally, and then I'll provide you with the updates to it at the end, if that's all right. So the various items and projects that have come up throughout this fiscal year, that were either not budgeted for or not going to be able to be absorbed by the current budget authority, and those items would include an increased amount for the law enforcement block grant of $13,791, a 911 equipment grant of $470,000, and then the Beatty Street trailhead construction project with an original price tag of $900,000. A resolution of intention was presented and approved on February 10th. Notices of the public hearing tonight were posted as required. So the objective here, again, approve the resolution to amend the budget for the increase of $1,399.71. The updates now that we'll get into, so the bids have come in for Beatty Street, I think they ranged anywhere from about $314,000 to $400,000, was the highest one that came in. And so as a result of that, we would recommend for the commission to amend this resolution prior to passing it down to a total amount of $949,071. And so that would be changing the Beatty Street trailhead project, completely removing the general fund portion of $400,000, and reducing the street fund contribution from $300,000 to $250,000, and leaving the open lands contribution at $200,000. And then, that's about as much information as I have as far as the amendment goes. As always, I've invited all of my friends here to answer your questions.
Okay, so stand by while we... Any comments from the commission?
Mr. Cooley, Mayor, I just have one question. So just to clarify, you gave a full... So the amount that we're amending is the $933,791?
Mayor and Commissioner Loughlin, $949,071 would be the total, the new total. So let me clarify that. So the reason that you'd see that total doesn't quite add up is the law enforcement block grant is actually going to end up being a $29,071 adjustment. The original budget for that that we had put in for FY '20 was $30,000 as a placeholder until we found out the actual amount. The actual amount came back at $43,791. So that's the $13,791 difference. The other makeup between the, what you would say, the $933 and the $949, there was $15,280 that was awarded as the county's portion of this grant last year that they didn't spend until this year. That should have been done as a carryover in the beginning of the year, but it wasn't, and that $15,280 has already been spent on our side, so I have to add that back. So the revenue was actually received last year, and so the revenue for that portion is there. But the budget authority, in order for us to put the entire grant awarded this year, is what we have to add back.
So, Mayor, that makes sense to me. I just want to make sure, because we have like a proposed staff amendment in front of us that has the $933,791, but that number...
Yeah, Commissioner. So that, I visited with City Attorney Joden and Acting Manager Knopke about whether we're going to present an official staff amendment. I didn't put that in myself. Of course, I would have had it at the $949, but I assume that's where that confusion comes in at, is that $15,280 difference from revenue that we already received last year for the law enforcement block grant. And so I was under the impression that we were going to ask you, as the commission, to actually do the amendment to the resolution as it is before passing it, as opposed to presenting a staff amendment, because it was just so late in the process that we got the bids and everything like that figured out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Public comments? Okay. Commissioner? Oh, gee. Okay, come on up.
Um, sorry.
No, that's fine.
I didn't know if we were gonna, you were gonna break it out in pieces to ask for questions, but my name's Gail Joslin. I live at 219 Vodder Street in Helena. And I presume that this is the time to make comment regarding anything that's in this amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. I have a request, and I have two questions. The request first, as a taxpaying citizen of Helena, I ask that you not spend our limited dollars on the Beatty Street parking lot. I don't believe that the city has analyzed the negative cumulative effects and impacts from this project that range from significant expenditures commandeering the public's trails for events, and how this parking lot and its reservation system to permit events dovetails with a tourism business improvement district, which has advertised extensive bike races throughout our public lands and wildlife habitats. There is much more that the citizens of Helena would like to know about this project and its consequences. Therefore, I do not believe that you should move forward with this project. And now for my questions, which I hope you can answer. Why hasn't the city seriously considered the alternative development to the Beatty Street parking lot that you're looking at now, that the Helena Citizens Council recommended, that allowed for the same number of parking spaces, gutters, sidewalks, et cetera, a plan much more amenable to the neighbors? Next, I'm wondering if you're not just a little bit chagrined, that you voted to spend an additional $900,000 on this project at the last, or at the February 10th commission meeting, only to have the bid come in at about $350,000. Why the huge discrepancy? Will the proponents of this parking lot be coming back to you again and again to compensate for the remainder of the $900,000 that you thought you were spending? Why did you vote, say, for Mr. Logan, to spend this amount of money at the last commission meeting? Thank you. I'd appreciate answers if you have them.
Thank you, ma'am. Is this about the Beatty Street, sir?
Well, in the same context as the budget amendment, if you want...
Because, you know, we have an item here on the Beatty Street, and... Okay. We'll accept you right now, sir.
My name is John Bowen Hall, and you might know me as John Hall. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, let me, I hadn't intended to, let me ask the young lady, answer the young lady's questions for you. The alternative was looked at, the alternative proposal, but what you have to visualize is a fairly steep grade that you have to get over in order to make this accessible, handicap accessible. So when you take out this little chunk of the hillside at the end of Beatty Street, you get to a place where you can go further and latch on to a road system that would actually get a wheelchair out of the parking area. The second thing is, is it's, the current parking area is at a little bit of a grade. Unless you're very careful with your doors, you're going to ding somebody. When you get up to a flat area, you're not. The second thing is this biker guild issue. It's almost as though we had a conspiracy of the biker guild bringing all these people to the trailhead when the city staff, who we should applaud, was studying it. And when they studied it, they found that this was the second-most-used trailhead in the community. So the idea that this is about the biker guild, it's not. It's about serving the best route to the top of Mount Ascension. And so a toilet, we can joke about when old people might need a toilet, but I'd suggest to you that this is a perfect place for one. And neighbors have complained, there are two sets of neighbors, but neighbors have complained about the need for a toilet. They express it differently, but there is a need for a toilet. So I would encourage you, and I would applaud, in reading the paper recently, you'll understand it. They overestimated it for a reason. But they also said that all the bids are so close that they don't see a cost overrun. Okay? And I believe you took the middle figure, $350,000, I think was the number that we came up with. So I just, I just hope that you move forward, that you understand that the first letter I wrote to you was 2018. It says about the same thing, if you want to avoid reading it this time. We need this. There was a study saying we need this. This is not the biking guild, and we should applaud that contractors in the city are willing to come in and do this project for $350,000, as opposed to castigate the staff for overestimating. So I appreciate your time. John Moore was right. The mountains are calling, and I must go. And the most direct route is Beatty Street, and it needs a parking lot that is level, that has a toilet, and that the handicap people can get out of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Before I begin, can I ask the city clerk a question? Is that okay?
Oh, ma'am.
No? Okay. My name is Sheri Thornton. I live at 735 South Beatty Street, and I am an adjacent landowner to this project. This is my husband, Nicholas Sobner. In December of 2013, I stood at the same podium, nine months pregnant, and testified in support of a land trade that Ryan Leland, at the direction of the former Parks and Rec Director, led my husband and I to believe was a viable, long-term solution to parking at Beatty. At that meeting, Commissioners thanked my husband and I for offering a solution that was described as a win-win for everyone, and which we were told solved the problem of parking at Beatty. My husband and I have felt so happy and proud that a land trade would provide better access to the Mount Ascension Trail System, and that in doing so, we could build a house for our growing family in a south-central neighborhood, a place we have both loved and called home for years. Fast forward to today. I stand at the same podium, pregnant again, before a different mayor and a different commission. Only this time, I'm standing for, here, fighting for my family, for my peaceful neighborhood, my quality of life, my property rights, and for what I believe is the right thing. And before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that Mayor, Commissioner Dean and Commissioner Logan, you guys are new this year, and so I don't, I don't refer to you in this next paragraph. In the past two and a half years, I have written over 15 letters to my mayor and commissioners. In those two and a half years, I have never received a response, not even an acknowledgement of my letter being received. As an adjacent landowner, I can't even begin to describe to you how dehumanizing this is. I have spent hours and days away from my family to write letters, attend meetings, and participate in a process that you deem as necessary for me to follow, and yet I don't receive acknowledgement. But what I do receive is bullying, harassment, and lies being spread about me, my husband, and by members of our community, city staff, leaders in our community, and neighbors who know nothing about us. We have become targets of a vicious smear campaign that has left our hearts broken. People we used to call friends, a town we have loved so much, my hometown. And it is this lack of compassion from the city that has been the worst part to endure. Did you know that as an adjacent landowner, my husband and I have never been contacted by either the city engineer or Parks and Rec Director to discuss what will happen to our shared property line, or how and where those sidewalks will go, or even if that berm truly will block out those headlights, which it won't? And any concern we have gets dismissed and instead belittled in the city's official response to comments. Can you imagine that? And can you imagine that in good faith, you traded land with your city government, believing you are doing the right thing and helping your community, and then before you know it, that same government you trusted is applying for a change of land use for a 50-car stall, paved parking lot with a double-vaulted toilet, all within a stone's throw of your children's bedroom windows, and all along the way of doing so haven't disclosed any of it to you? You only find out about it through the grapevine, and when it is too late for you to appeal any decisions with the BLM or the FWP. And then you find out that others knew, others who have been vying for the land that was meant to be left in its natural state, and in which the most recently-vetted open lands management plan states that it is to be left as a minor trailhead, meaning parking, trailhead, and muck-mits. And yet, nobody cares. Those people don't care. They will get our public lands, and they will get their event center. Can you imagine for a moment what it's like, what it's been like for us? Today, I stand here before you and share with you that it has been devastating. I can't tell you how many nights I cry, and I wonder what we're going to do, where we're going to go, when the event center gets built outside our sleeping children's windows, the event center that in 2017, the Chair of the HOLMAC states in an RTP Grant Support Letter that the Beatty Street Trailhead Parking Lot will be a greatly enhanced to accommodate large outdoor events, including those involving participants arriving in large vans and bus vehicles. How am I going to explain to my children the headlights shining in their eyes as they sleep, the loud ruckus of a party out their window as they nap, and why there's the stench of human feces drafting through their window during a hot summer night? We bought our land believing we were doing a good thing... We bought our land believing we were doing a good thing for our community and our city. And now that city and that community can't even be human enough to have compassion for how it's affecting us. I don't have words to describe the pain. The impact is unbearable. If any one of you were in our position, and a double-vaulted outdoor toilet was being put outside your children's bedroom windows, and a plan was designed that directed headlights to shine into their bedrooms, you would feel the same way. Don't tell me you wouldn't. I am a citizen of this city, just as you all are. And I ask you, and all those out there who have spread lies, bullied us, and harassed us, to think of that word, compassion. For a moment, I'm asking you all, and everyone in this room, to have a little bit of it. My name is Sherri Thornton, I live at seven thirty-five South Beatty Street. And I object to this project. And at this time, I'd like to hand-deliver each of you a document, if I may, or the city clerk. I have been asked, in, I've been given written permission to read an objection by Jim and Karen Pelzell, they are landowners west of the current parking lot. Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, this is from Karen Pelzell. I am writing about the proposed expansion of the Beatty Street access to the Beatty Street Trailhead. My husband and I own the property to the right of the current parking lot when facing Mount Ascension, and she offers the description. We oppose allowing the city to use our land for any purpose without our express written permission. At this time, we have not given any written permission. Currently, we stand in opposition to the changes proposed by the city to develop the Beatty Street Trailhead. Karen Pelzell, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nick Sobner, seven thirty-five South Beatty Street. I just want to add that the current design plan places fill material in order to achieve the grade on the Pelzells' property, and the city currently does not have access. I've written dozens of comments, letters myself. I can't think of a single thing I haven't said already that I need to say again, but I object to this resolution.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dan Preble, fifty-five South Fee Street, Helena. I'm just, first, just to disagree with the resolution to amend the budget. Mainly, unless it, you know, unless it is, if there was an emergency, then I would, I would say that I would agree. But we have budgets for a reason, and I think we should, we should operate between them. And one of those being that I am concerned with is this Beatty Street, you know, parking. I think the infrastructure that we have is, has been neglected and in need way ahead of time of what, what we're trying to do here. Just south of this building is Clark Street. Quite a, quite a while back, it was voted the worst street in Helena. Surveys, markers went up along the properties, and, and something was supposed to be done there, and it hasn't. And I know, you know, as taxpayers and at budgets, you know, we are tight. But now to see that you're going to take monies budgeted for our street projects, and to, and to take it, and then there was supposed to also the general fund for a project that I guess wasn't considered or budgeted, I just, I can't agree with, and I just don't see how we can do that. To me, and to looking forward, is we can never put our wants before our needs. And our infrastructure in this town, and you can go, you know, all around our, our city and see this, the streets themselves, and then the, all the other infrastructure that goes with that. And it is expensive, and it's going to take a lot. And we are going to have to reinvest into our, our city because it has been neglected. And, but we cannot go ahead into future projects, or, or these kind of projects that are, you know, on a wish list. We need to take care of our town first. Now, it's great that we have this trail system. And I was just up there earlier today. And it's usable, and it works. As a matter of fact, I think it was on Friday, I saw a photo in our, in our, in our newspaper that showed a mother with her two children having a very nice walk going through there. So I, at this point, I don't see where we can even consider, when we make everything in our infrastructure whole again and, and repaired, I would have no problem looking at that. But at this point in time, I just don't see how it can even be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Eric Prostin, I live at one hundred North Rodney. I sympathize with the woman. I love the mountains, the trails, I have very extensive experience with bicycles. I used to be a bicycle messenger in downtown Manhattan. I, I've been in this town since like sixty-six, and I started to learn to ride bicycles in this area. And I would say, what, what do you need to be having a party in the parking lot? The idea is to get your car parked, get the bicycle off it, and go. You know, I mean, they, these people shouldn't even hear these people parking, really. You know, they shouldn't have any problems other than they might have to use the restroom and be quiet. But that's what the trailhead's for, so you can get out in the wilderness. You know, if you want to do a tailgate party, go to the Patriot Stadium, you know, and have a big blowout tailgate party with everybody else, you know? I mean, that's what not a trailhead parking lot's supposed to be all about. You're supposed to be on your bicycles or hiking and get up into the wilderness.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Lynn Boone, I live at six thirty-eight First Street. And I stand before you again tonight to request that the Commission not move forward with the Beatty Street project at this time for the following reasons. The Beatty Street project wasn't included in the fiscal year 2020 budget last spring for whatever the reasons. Fiscal year 2020 is almost over. Departments are currently compiling and presenting the fiscal year 2021 budget requests, which will be reviewed and addressed with the City Manager and Commission. In mid-June, a public hearing will be held on the city budget before the final budget is adopted. The Beatty Street project should be included in this process. At a recent Commission meeting, the question was asked during the public comment time about why the sudden switch to the money issue from opponents of the project. It wasn't until the resolution of intention to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget came before the Commission. This is when the public became aware of the amount of money being requested for the project and where funding would be coming from. The fact that the bids came in lower than anticipated for Beatty Street does not change the plan to pull money from reserve funds. Reserve funds seem like emergency money only tapped for unforeseen circumstances or critical needs. What is so critical about this trailhead parking lot that it needs to be done now? Last spring, several departments had made budget requests for fiscal year 2020. They were asked to make cuts due to budget deficits. It seems like these departments, especially if their budget requests had to do with essential goods and services, would have priority to any reserve funds or other funds still available for the remainder of fiscal year 2020. It would be nice to know how all these departments feel about this. And I'm actually working on getting to talk to them, thanks to city staff. I have a ton of questions, and city staff has been very accommodating. So I'm going to be having various meetings coming up, they, just nothing could happen before tonight. Repeated comments were also made at the same Commission meeting about the importance of addressing ADA needs. I understand the value of this and that there are some regulations that need to be followed. However, wouldn't it make more sense to develop trailheads and trails where those with special needs can actually get beyond the parking lot? There are existing trails that could be made more easily accessible with some work. Beatty doesn't seem to be like one of them. I also have gone through my own physical limitations over the years, and I can't hike Beatty Street. I hope to get back up there someday. It would be nice to hear from those with ADA needs about trails that they would like to see developed. What do they think of the Beatty Street project? I don't know if you all have heard from any of them about this or not. Snowplow turnaround was another repeated reason given why the Beatty Parking Lot is needed. Snow has to go somewhere. Based on where snow gets piled on all the streets right now, I think the parking lot is going to become a very expensive turnaround place with not much room left for parking. Another repeated comment made at the recent Commission meeting was that, was that the Beatty Street project has gone on for too long. At last week's city administration meeting, a safe routes to school project along Knight Street was discussed. This project has drug on for twenty years and is still not done. The estimated cost for this project was indicated to be about eight hundred thousand, about the same amount of money originally requested for Beatty Street. I would much rather my taxpayer dollars go towards this way overdue public safety project. Beatty Street can wait a while longer. Some upgrades to the existing Beatty Street Trailhead Parking Lot would be nice. To the extent being proposed, doubtful. South Beatty Street itself needs work, especially to address storm-water runoff. However, I feel that there are way too many questions that need to be answered before the city moves ahead with this project. For starters, where's all the money going to come from to pay for everything? There's a lot going on in the world right now, and money is tight for the majority of us. There are major necessary projects with high budgets facing the city. I think we need answers to how much money will be needed to fund even the most important and essential goods and services first, in order to have a better idea of what can be allocated to non-essential items. Also, the Beatty Street Trailhead Parking Lot appears to be in an R1 zone. This zone requires a conditional use permit to put in a parking lot. Does the city need to go through the same CUP process when wanting to do a project, just like residents and others have to? Or does whomever is awarded the project have to go through this process? The zoning commission is currently working on, or has already revised, the conditional use permit process by amending Chapter Three Title, and I don't know if it's Roman numeral two, or if it's Title Eleven, but anyway, it's Chapter Three Title something of the city code. And is this a done deal? Shouldn't the public have been informed and allowed to offer public comment? Or will this comment period be happening soon? I understand that the zoning commission is also working on revision of definitions used in the zoning districts, like when they're talking about items that are permitted, not permitted, or that need a conditional use permit, they're going through all the definitions. Well, one of these is adding the word "commercial" to the parking lot definition. And what does the word "commercial" mean, especially as it relates to a parking lot in a residential R1 district? I am in the process of getting all these questions answered, too. I have reached out to one of the city planners, and they are following up with answers. I, I just learned about all this stuff yesterday. Who's going to pay for the sidewalks along South Beatty Street? City staff have said financial responsibility is with the abutting property owners. Then why does it look like sidewalks are part of the budget request for Beatty Street? Don't know. What is the city planning on doing about the lack of ADA ramps along various sidewalks on Beatty Street and the side streets? Seems like this needs to be an included part of the plan. There's all this talk about all the ADA stuff in the parking lot, but how do people get there? They'd have to drive in their cars, because if you walk along Beatty Street, you'll see it is hit and miss. So you're on a sidewalk, you go in the street, if you're on the sidewalk, if you're in a wheelchair. So to Mayor and Commissioners, I end this with a question to each one of you. Based on your own personal financial situations and what you know about the financial situations facing the city, would the Beatty Street project be one of your top priorities for city funds at this time? And specifically, this question is directed to you, Commissioner Halliday, since I haven't heard back from you yet. You've been quoted as saying that to not move forward with the resolution to amend fiscal year 2020 budget would be reneging on a promise. Many of us would like to know what this promise is and to whom it was made. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Monica Rankin, and I live at eight fifteen North Harris Street. I'll be shorter, but I agree with the previous citizen. She made very good points, but I strongly disagree with the Beatty Street Trailhead. There are many more projects in this town related to projects that would serve all of the citizens, namely, like some of the previous citizens stated, infrastructure. I'm appalled that the citizens of Helena have not just mentioned this before, or it hasn't been brought up, but the condition of the streets in this town is, it's sad. I mean, it's, it's pathetic. I mean, most of the streets, you know which ones not to drive because they're that horrible. And I have lived here for most of my life, and I've never, I've never seen this before. I don't know why you would rob a general fund or a street fund to pay for something like this when we have other needs that would suit larger portions of the population. And when we bought our home twenty-five years ago, the alleys were graded in our neighborhood every, every other year, so, once in two years. I'm thinking now it's going on probably five years since our alley's been graded, and if not, it's been really close. But they used to always all be done. I don't know if that's even done anymore, which that actually is an obligation of the city. They come around and they trim our trees if we don't trim them in the alley. Sometimes they trim them even before they ask us, you know, because we usually take care of our own. But I don't see where not doing alleys comes in. I mean, it had been a service always, I've never heard that it wasn't a service. And ours is so bad now because of the past winters that we've had. It's, it's a little ridiculous. I mean, you've got to start serving all of the people, not just special interests. And the Beatty Street project is a no in my book, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, good evening. My name's Tom Philmood. I live at six twenty-one Second Street. I'd just like to make a few comments. The Commission, and the city in specific, the last few years have made some great strides in addressing global warming and climate change. You issued the proclamation a couple of years ago in support of the Paris Climate Accords. Recently, you issued a proclamation committing the city to sustainably sourced power in the future. You hired a sustainability coordinator that told the city, the state of Montana, and many people in the United States, you were serious about addressing global warming. But if you build this parking lot as proposed, you're going to tell people, never mind, just kidding. We weren't serious. You can take the proclamations, or you can take the job description for the sustainability coordinator, bury them under asphalt in the parking lot, because it won't mean anything. The parking lot will increase traffic, it will increase global warming emissions. It'll be like a magnet, more traffic every year, like a big vacuum. In a couple of years, people come back to you, they go, oh my God, oh my God, the parking lot's full. We need another parking lot. We can't let that happen. You just really need to think what your children would do. Would they approve this parking lot? Would your kids... Would your kids' kids approve the parking lot? That's going to increase traffic, increase emissions. At some point, you just have to say, "No, we're not going to do that." And you can work with your user groups, you can work with the committees, the organizations in Helena that are promoting tourism, promoting the parking lot, promoting use of the trails, and try to work out a way to increase non-motorized use, traffic to the trailhead, you know? Park somewhere else, park 100 yards away, encourage people to bike and walk if possible, or if they have to drive, maybe park a block away or park three blocks away. Anyway, at this time, I'd just like to say that I'd like to see you say no to the parking lot and yes to the climate and yes to the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jeff Bradley, 1216 Eighth Ave.
Is that a beer?
I wish.
Oh, just making sure that's on.
If it was, would you want it?
No.
Mayor and Commissioner, thanks for taking the time to listen to me speak. I hope that you will approve this budget as, or the budget amendment as proposed by staff. Beatty Street is a trailhead that I frequent. It's a great one to get to for a quick hike during the day, in the evening, when you just have a minute. I'm not someone that's fortunate enough to live close enough to our open lands that make it easy for me to quickly get up there and walk from my door, so I do drive to them on occasion. This project has gone through a couple of years now worth of review, discussion, and the rest. The city staff has done a great job of going through a number of revisions, talking to community members, talking to HCC, and I think this is at the point where the committee can, can approve it. There are, there's a similar trailhead on the Helena, Mount Helena side that gets a lot of use. As people have probably noticed, there are not huge parties out there. I'm not sure where that assumption is coming from. I think it's going to be a really great addition to the community, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jake Gunther. I live at 1221 Chestnut Street, and I am here hoping that you guys will approve the amended budget. I, I work as a civil engineer myself, so I'm very familiar with what actually goes into ADA design, and I believe that, you know, the, I, I know that these people, and I think you guys have done a great job of going through the public involvement process and really expanding what that process is in Helena. And, you know, I know, working as engineer, that the city has to have spent at least $200,000, if not more, between engineering, public involvement activities, and then the iterations that have come out of this two-year public involvement process. And it would be beyond short-sighted, in my opinion, to take a project that we've already invested close to a quarter of a million dollars in, that the price tag of the project itself is hardly more than that, and let that go to waste. I would echo the former speaker's comments on, you know, it's, it's a little bit disingenuous to call a 18 or 20-stall parking lot, whatever it is, a event center or a place for parties, you know? And then getting back to the circling background on the ADA, in the existing parking lot, in the alternative that these, these fine people have presented, to kind of maintain the existing parking lot, that's just not possible to meet ADA there, so I just would really hope that you guys can use your judgment and approve the amendment to, and take advantage of the fact contractors in our city are willing to do a good project that's going to help a lot of people for a fair price. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Charlotte McCann. I live out at 1934 Hauser Boulevard. I am against amending the budget to pay for the Beatty Street parking lot. I'm going to put it in terms you can try and understand. If there are 20 parking spaces and it costs you $1.2 million, how many dollars per parking space is that? $60,000, okay? They reduced the price down to $300,000 plus the $200,000 the last fellow was talking about. That's $500,000 for 20 parking spaces. How much is that? It's still like $20,000 per parking space. As a taxpayer, I think this is ridiculous to spend that kind of money for a select group of users while so many other needs in our city need the money. And you're going to amend the budget as an increase to what you had once established. In other words, let's pay for the party. Thank you. I am against it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Denise Barber. I live at 513 Graham Street, and I am here in support of the Beatty Street trailhead project. I would just want to address one main point about the event center. It is true that way back when, they, there were plans to make this a much bigger parking lot, and there was going to be picnic tables and maybe even room to have an event, but that's not the case anymore. It has gone, because of public comment, it's gone from a pretty large parking lot down to 20 spots, and there are no plans to have a big party or, or events there. So I don't understand that fear or concern, and I don't share it. After two years of public comments, the majority of the people who have weighed in on this issue via the various meetings and in writing have supported this project, including many of the people who live on Beatty Street, and I stand with the majority of the public, and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Morgan Smith. I live at 633 Iowa Street. My wife Lori and I live 63 feet from the proposed trailhead, and we are in very strong support of building this project and getting it moving forward. This is a super important piece of infrastructure for our neighborhood. And most importantly, it increases access for everybody in Helena to be able to celebrate our wonderful trail system. It's a gem. Not many places have something as, as great as the trails that we have. I think the trailhead increases dignity for a whole bunch of people, especially with the bathroom. People are going to use that anyway, and having a solution for that would be super helpful. There's been a ton of opportunity for our neighborhood to comment on this. I think this is the 12th meeting I've been to, and I've missed a handful of them as well. I've provided public comment and suggestions and had conversations with people more times than I can think in the last two and a half years. And this is, I think, has been a very inclusive process, and I'd like to thank all of you and your staff and your consultants for facilitating that and making it easy to talk to folks. I think the plan's great, and it's gone on long enough, and hopefully we can get to building it, so please support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Susan Leonard. I live at 708 Second Street, and I would like to present the following three reasons why I oppose this project. No matter whether the expenditure is $900,000, $300,000, $100,000, or even $50,000, there is absolutely no documented need for a project of this scope. I will speak in contrary to the fellow who spoke and said that the study's been done. The only study indicated that it's the second most-used trailhead, but if you actually look at the devil of the details, 80% of those persons at that trailhead were on foot, which shows this is a very walkable community, or walkable trailhead. The paper trail is clear, this really is a special interest group project proposed to be paid for by taxpayer dollars. Number two, persons have stood before this commission on numerous occasions and presented themselves in support of this project without identifying themselves as members of the Board of Directors, or for that matter, members generally of this, of a special interest group involved in proposing, promoting, and benefiting from this project. I anticipate the same will happen this evening. Blatant misrepresentation by omission. Anyone? Number three, this project has been arbitrarily decided upon without analysis or justification and based upon promises to persons unknown, reasons unknown, and outside the purview of transparency, true public participation or knowledge. And I would also like to comment on the Mount Helena parking lot. People keep making a comparison that the neighborhood that was created at Mount Helena was done so with the express understanding that that trailhead was already there. They all have off-street parking. That is not the case on Beatty Street. And for these reasons and multiple other reasons identified over the last two and a half years repeatedly ignored by the city, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Meg Bishop. I live at 704 State Street, and I would just like to once again express my strong opposition to amending the budget to implement the Beatty Street trailhead project, otherwise known as the parking lot. I think I would also like to mention that one of my bigger concerns perhaps, and a concern maybe for all Helennans, is that the idea that a city governmental body can make a random arbitrary decision about a major project with potentially huge significant impacts to a neighborhood and a community without being part of any planning document that exists right now. There is no planning document that has included Beatty Street as a priority, and without doing any kind of substantive analysis on, or a collection of data showing a justification or a need for the project like this. I agree with many of the previous speakers who expressed a strong desire for the city to consider other needs that are probably more pressing in the community, and perhaps this is more of a want than a need. I know that the sidewalk projects that would contribute to the safety for children to walk safely to school on Knight Street is probably a huge priority, yet it's been languishing for 20 years. So I would just encourage the commission to consider those things. And please, it's important, I think it's important in any democratic process to understand and to believe in your city government that these kinds of arbitrary, random decisions can't be made, and then we can back into them by saying, "Well, we've conducted two years of amazing public outreach process, so we should all be happy." I think there's, that's a danger, and I do think that the Beatty Street project can be accomplished at a much lower impact and a lower price tag, and we can start addressing other needs in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Eric Grove. I live at 724 South Beatty Street, about 75 feet from the parking lot. I, I, I don't know that we're here to, again, debate the merits of the parking lot. That's been done over the course of two and a half years. I mean, I think every, I mean, there's literally nothing left to say, I, I believe, in terms of, of public comment. There's, there's dozens of pages of analyzed public comment on this project. What I would say is that you're in, in the position of making a budget decision. There's no question, maybe this is a vast understatement, that this is, was a difficult and divisive issue. I think the only thing that would make it worse is to take an approved project that we have two and a half years of public involvement in and to sideline that project because of the budget issue, especially given that the budget issue has been reduced to a pretty reasonable, in fact, some might say a bargain. And so I would hope that we can get this done, and the only way really for this community to move on, if, if it's sidelined over the budget issue, it's just going to continue to fester. We're going to continue to have these kind of meetings, and it's going to go on and on and on. So I would ask for some closure, I think. And just a bit of an aside, I'm going to nominate the South into Beatty Street for the worst street in Helena, because at least Clark Street has pavement on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Copeland, 1610 Hudson Street. Greetings, Mayor, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Staff and the community of Helena. My question is, oh, I heard mention a little bit about 911 funds in your report, is that correct? Something about, like, how much was the amount approximately?
Go ahead.
So it's a new amount of $13,791, sort of a total adjustment of $29,071.
Okay, approximately about a year ago, there was a mention at administrative meeting about the 911 system needing approximately...
I'm sorry, you're talking about the 911? $470,000.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Approximately about a year ago, there was an administrative meeting where they were talking about the 911 system needing some serious upgrades because it was kind of a little bit of old technology, so they were looking at upgrading the, the whole system. And they said, I, I don't remember exactly what the amount was, because I had a head injury in '86, so numbers are kind of hard to remember, but it was like $4 or $5 million or something like that to upgrade it. Now, is that going to, is, is that part of this system? Is it an upgrade? Are they going to phase this in, in certain increments over a certain span of time? Or has that issue already been addressed so that the 911 system is operating with modern
Mr. Copeland, just continue with your comments, please.
Okay. And the other question that I have is, in the spirit of transparency, are there any budget changes due to the fact that we're changing and going to be hiring a new manager? Or is that, is that going to alter our budget in the payout for the old manager and for the new manager? That, I mean, is there, that has to alter the budget in some way. Is that part of this budget? Do I need to rephrase the question?
No, we ask that you continue with your comments.
So, so my other comment was, the first one was about the 911 system and whether they, how, how that's going to budget out that amount and whether it's going to be phased. And the second question is, since the previous manager had some kind of a payout in order to, and then we're going to have a new city manager coming in, that's going to alter our budget. Is that part of this budget amendment?
Are your comments done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Michelle Webster, 304 Graham. I've submitted numerous letters. I've stood here before, and I'm asked, I oppose the Beatty Street project and the amendment for the budget. I'll spare you going through all the different reasons. Money is only a portion of the reasons. The project has numerous problems with the process, and we just need to oppose it. I can't think of any, how do you want to word this? Please vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Gary Rankin, 815 North Harris Street. As a taxpayer in the city of Helena for 35-plus years, I wonder where our tax dollars really go. If we're looking at $300,000 for a Beatty Street improvement, and you drive on Broadway, you drive on 11th, any street in Helena is in horrible shape. So if we take $250,000 out of the street budget, or even $100,000, I think it's a ridiculous waste. I think as citizens that are taxpayers, we deserve to have better roads, they'd be safer to drive on. Think of the wear and tear on the vehicles. It's, it's, I'm definitely against this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Marie Stumpf. I live at 418 South Beatty Street. Kind of have the same sentiments as Michelle does, and I oppose the, the amendment to the Beatty Kind of have the same sentiments as Michelle does and I oppose the amendment to the Beatty Street content. I'm not going to get into details. For me, it just goes back to the very beginning and how everything was handled. We were not included. HOMAC and Parks and Rec were talking about it in 2015 and we didn't know about it until 2017. So I don't understand why we were left out, I guess. So I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Lindsay Gilstrap. I live at 377 Brookfield Drive and I'm asking you to approve the budget amendment as proposed. I'm not fortunate enough to live close to a trailhead, so I often find myself having to load a bike up or grab my hiking boots and drive to trailheads. And as Beatty Street currently stands, it's probably the location that I get the most door dings. It's not a, not a great parking lot as it is in its current form and I'm excited to hopefully see this project move forward, including the ADA accessibility. I think we're only going to achieve great things moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Gina Satterfield, 1315 Charlie Russell. From listening to this tonight, I think it's apparent where the homeowners, the taxpayers, are being pushed out. If you're not answering the letters and if you're not paying attention to the people that are actually paying the taxes and you're allowing this Delphi technique of people coming up here that must be gaining something else other than getting to use the toilet, I don't get what you're not seeing. People do not want this. We need to get our streets fixed. And if we're all on this global warming deal or global cooling, whatever you want to call it, climate change, you had a bunch of children up here on climate change and the Bill and Melinda Gates. I just look at you people and I go, what are you thinking when you are pushing this agenda on everyone? Sustainable development goals are not for homeowners, landowners. It's for people that want to push them out and gain something by it. I'm against this. Vote against it. And answer the letters.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Joel Gerhart. I live at 1719 Golden Street and I have absolutely nothing to gain by any of the testimony I offer tonight. I am a taxpayer in the city of Helena, been living here for a long time. Just doing some real quick math on this with a number of people in the city of Helena over 30 years, which is about how long a parking lot would last. It's about 44 cents per person, per year. I think that's pretty reasonable to have a parking area where I can take friends, family, where a little kid could get out and go potty, do things like that. I think it's a really good deal and as a taxpayer in this city, I probably pay a pretty good chunk of taxes in this community. I fully support this. I'm more than willing to pay my taxes and have this service available to everybody in the community and I support this. I support all the other parts of the budget amendment as well. I think those are all a great idea. I support it all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, I'm Mayor Byron DeFord, 555 South Davis. And I live right at the start of the trail system and I built there because I wanted to see people on the trail. Nothing makes me happier than to see families using the trail. Two houses, three houses have been built next to me in the recent years and there are porta-potties there. And from the people, the builders who have put them there, they say they get used a lot. I'm a fan of toilets. I'm a fan of trails. I think it's a great deal and I think we should go through with it. Green space is good.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Dan Berry. I live at 401 South Beatty Street. I'm also a local business owner downtown. I'm very in favor of the trailhead, not for personal reasons or anything. I just like my neighborhood and I think improving infrastructure is a really good idea. I actually just signed up to try and get new sidewalks because I think that's a great idea. I live on a corner lot with really bad sidewalks. Doesn't have any wheelchair accessibility, but I don't think people are really going to wheelchair up Beatty Street. But if there's a parking lot and they have the ability to go enjoy even sitting outside at a picnic table, that might be, that'll make their day. I'm able to ride my bike up the trail, so I'm very lucky. But I'm in favor of the trailhead. I think it's a great idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. Tyler Lehman, 810 Wolf Road. You've heard me express before that I'm not fortunate enough to live close to the trailhead, as I've said before. But I do enjoy our trail system, driving my family there, occasionally even riding my bike from the far north Helena city limits to the south hills. I am very much in favor of the amendment for the fiscal budget. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Tim Chisman.
Hello.
635 Second Street, corner of Second and Beatty. I am in favor of the budget amendment and the trailhead. I believe in all of the infrastructure that everybody's talked about and I think South Beatty could use that. And I am here just speaking on behalf of myself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Gone once, twice, gone. Okay, thank you all for all the comments. I think our agenda got rearranged a little bit because I thought we were going to be discussing this later, but I guess we got the ball rolling, so where are we? So, Mr. Leland?
Mayor, may I ask, I know we still need to make a motion and act on this, on this item, but may I ask a question? I think, I don't know, Mr. Kuyer, if it might be Mr. Leland, but as it relates to what is now reflected in this amended budget amendment, can you kind of talk through real quick what is factored into the Beatty Street trailhead specifically? So as far as what would be coming out of open lands and street maintenance, what is that cover, you know, as far as what the projected costs are?
Mayor, Commissioner, with the new budget amendment or budget amendment that we're asking for is we're having $200,000 come out of the open space. The idea there is to cover the parking lot and/or the trailhead improvements that are going to be out there and if it wants to be paved or not. And then the street portion of it will be for paving curb gutter and sidewalks from Beatty Street, the dirt portion of Beatty Street. So that is where we're looking at. We have $250,000 in the street maintenance just to have a little bit of cushion. We're hoping not to use it because it is a surface project and we aren't looking at getting into any of the utilities and stuff, but instead of coming back, we'd rather just have that type of budget amendment and talk about it.
And then one quick follow-up, Mayor. Does it also reflect some traffic calming measures that I know we had discussed as well?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, it does. Sorry, as part of the street, the street is going to take care of the traffic calming, which includes a lot of signage down around Clinton Park. And then there will be a crosswalk that is not the grade of the street, so it'll be, it'll be traffic calming and then some bulb outlets up closer. So it's trying to keep the traffic down or the traffic speeds down going up and down, so that is a portion of the street.
Any other comments from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Kuyer.
Mayor, I guess I have, I mean, maybe I'll just speak to the, to the budget amendment itself and just, again, thank you to the staff for providing the information and, you know, updating what is needed for this amendment. I think, you know, we knew, we knew going into the FY '20 budget process that we were likely going to have an amendment for, particularly for Beatty Street, given that we needed to go through the process. We had a number of public meetings as well as discussions on, you know, what the full scope of the, of the project would be and what the full cost would be. So I appreciate the work that the staff has done in providing, you know, pretty frequent updates to the commission on where the project sat and the, and the public feedback that they had been getting. You know, I commented on this when we, when we did first passage, but I think it's worth just repeating a little bit of it, given that there are a number of folks that have come out again today to speak on the project. You know, it is, it is true that this, a lot of these conversations started several years ago in HOMAC and I think that the commission really stepped in in 2017 and 2018 to say, you know, we really want to make sure that there is an adequate public process in making, you know, in deciding whether or not we wanted to move forward with this project. We, I think this commission itself has held a number of administrative meetings and full meetings to discuss the project. I know there have been numerous public meetings that were facilitated by, by the city and consultants to get feedback on, on the scope of the project. And through a lot of those meetings, the, the city staff brought forward a revised project that was, reduced the number of parking spots and, and I think was hoping to be responsive to some of the concerns that, that the city had been hearing, given the level of traffic and so thinking about both street improvements but also investments in traffic calming so that we could ensure that the adequate safety of the neighborhood. I think, you know, this is an important investment that we can make in our, in our trail system and I do support moving forward. I think, you know, the former Commissioner, the late Ed Noonan spoke really articulately about the ADA accessibility as being a really key component of this and I think spoke to his own personal experiences and the opportunities that he's had, that he had to visit Mount Helena and that this was an important investment that we could make for Mount Ascension and for the Beatty Street Trailhead. So I, I think that I'm certainly pleased to see that the overall cost is below what we had originally anticipated and I think that the fact that we are, you know, with this amendment will not be taking any funds from the general fund is certainly positive. I think this is an important investment of the open lands fund, an important investment in the, in the, in the street, the Beatty Street itself. So I appreciate all of the comments. I think we have gotten a lot of feedback and I think, I know that the former Parks Director, the current Parks Director, former city manager has spent quite a bit of time with individual members of the, of the community. I think, if I'm not mistaken, even visited some of the homes of those that, that are present today. And so, you know, I, I certainly have taken, I think, all of the comments to heart. I appreciate that through that we've been able to adjust and be responsive to some of the concerns and I, I hope that we can move forward with this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have, I think, one question for Mr. Leland and then a comment.
Please.
I just want to be sure that I am reading this correctly, that the bid for the trailhead is the smallest portion of the overall cost. Most of it is going to the street improvement. Is that correct?
Mayor, Commissioner, I haven't got into that, but yes, it is. The trailhead improvements, we did a base bid, additive alternate one, additive alternate two. The base bid is for the dirt work and to look at the trail improvements that are up there, that is around $112,000. Then additive alternate one is for the street itself. That's around $180,000. And then if we wanted to pave the parking portion of the trailhead improvements, that's around $22,000. So it's $180 compared to $134,000.
Okay, great, thank you. And just a couple of comments. One, like I've said before, this is one of the topics that I've received more public comment on than almost anything. One of my largest concerns was the price tag and I was very happy to see the bids come in where they were. I was also happy to see that a street that needed to have improvements will have that opportunity. I think that that infrastructure is important. I will say that, being that this is my first year in the budgeting process, I will be advocating that we address this type of planning at the start of the budgeting process rather than just a simple understanding that we know that we're going to need to amend it. I'd like to see that at the beginning and being very clear about that. Also, given that this trailhead is the second most used trailhead in the Helena open land system, I believe that providing and increasing accessibility for our community members is important. I think our open lands are arguably the greatest community asset that we have and access to them, in my opinion, is an issue of equity. And then finally, I'd just like to say that I know that this is an issue that is a very emotional topic for a lot of people that are in favor and opposed. And like I said, I received a massive, and I think the whole commission received a massive amount of feedback on this particular issue. And I do want to assure folks that I did my best to evaluate the information that I received from the community feedback, the reports that were done over the last two and a half years. And I tried to fairly analyze both the positive and negative impacts of this trailhead to the best of my abilities, but I do truly appreciate the feedback and the engagement of the community. I know that it is an emotional topic for folks that are in favor and opposed, but I think that this is an issue of equity and access to our trailheads is one of the most important things that we can do in providing a healthy, thriving community for our, our kids and grandkids. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
So I've made comments before on this project. I think it's a good project. I think we need to move forward with it at this point. When I think back to about two years ago when this commission first started discussing the Beatty Street Trailhead, it was a different project and, and I'm the first to say that the public outreach at that point by the city was, I think, pretty poor. I think the commission at that time made a commitment to the proponents of the project, to the opponents of the project. At that time, it wasn't clear who was a proponent, who was an opponent, because we were looking at this project in a different context than, than what was coming up. There were still discussions of placing a parking lot much farther south of where it sits today. There was a larger still potential parking lot where it is today. There's the project that's there today. Then there were those advocating for, for nothing to be done at all. I think, and I know people will disagree with me, that the commission listened throughout that process and that the commission has lived up to that, that commitment and that promise that it was going to take public comment, the community, and that's, that's the entire Helena community considerations into effect, scaled back the scope of this project, talked about how to put traffic calming in, even though our traffic study said it didn't meet warrants. There are other places in town that do meet warrants, but the commission said that that's one place that we're going to, we're going to bury that objection and make sure that we meet that promise and we put in traffic calming and that we pave the streets so that it constricts it. You know, these are, these are all how we move through... You know, these are all how we move through the process, and it means it doesn't come out perfectly for everyone. There are individuals who wanted a larger parking lot up there. There are individuals who wanted a different scope that weren't thrilled with having to go through two years of discussing this. But at the end of the day, I am comfortable that the commission did live up to that process, did live up to the promise that it made, that it was going to attempt to come up with a project that took public comment, that took it seriously, that tried to incorporate it and build out something that will be an asset and a benefit to this community in the future. We could build this parking lot, we now know, for a significantly lower amount, 134,000-ish dollars. We could throw overboard the street improvements, but I think that would be a pretty bad idea in that that's how we spoke to so many individuals in the community who came up to me and said, "We do need traffic calming. You've got to park there. It's a neighborhood. You just have to think about this differently." And so I believe we have to do the entire project as it exists. That was our commitment that we made.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who has weighed in on this issue. As Commissioner Dean alluded to, I've not heard a, there is no issue that I've heard more about than this one, and earnest and heartfelt opinions on both sides of the issue. And as I spoke at the last time, we deliberated this in a regular commission meeting. I struggled with the financial side of it. And I got to be honest, I still struggle with that. We, on the, oh gosh, I guess it was the third of February, leading into an admin meeting two days after that, we received, staff and the commission received, an email from the acting city manager addressing what I would consider to be a pretty significant budget concern. And in that, he said, "A biennial budget was adopted for FY20 and FY21. Departments only prepared and planned for a one-year budget FY20. Upon submitting FY20 budgets, we were informed we would be implementing a biennial budget based on FY20 numbers. The FY21 budget was cut and paste from the submitted FY20 budget. This is causing difficulty with budget planning for FY21." And at that time, the finance department was looking for commission direction in moving forward. And at that meeting on the 5th, we were told that these revisions and updates we would be hearing about in six to eight weeks. And I don't know that we've got that picture yet. And I guess I say that as an individual commissioner who is tasked in allocating, in prioritizing and allocating financial resources. I think there is still a great deal of uncertainty with the budget we operate in and next year's budget as well. And so in terms of priorities, I don't, this one does not rise to the top for me in those financial concerns. And so for those really broad reasons, I just can't support this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I know since I've been on this commission, we've discussed the Beatty Street Trailhead, and we've struggled with the numbers. We've heard from our experts. They had a rough estimate of almost $900,000, which included street work, park work, toilets, sidewalks. And after their evaluation and bids that came in, they realized that that amount was way off, almost three times more than what was anticipated. And my confusion here is even though we are talking about $130,000, I still hear people talking about $900,000, $900,000 up till today, and that is not accurate. Mr. Leland, would you step forward, please? Mr. Leland, please tell the public, what is the estimated amount for the parking lot once more?
Mayor, with the base bid, with the bids that we received, so they are no longer an estimate, we had a much higher estimate, but with the bids that we received, the parking lot for the dirt work or the, and the amenities at the trailhead is 112,000, and then if you wish to pave it, that's another 22,000, so it's 134,000.
So the Beatty Street Trailhead parking lot could go up to 134,000?
Correct.
Thank you. Please tell the public, what's the amount for the sidewalks?
The amount for the sidewalks, looking at it without breaking it down specifically, because there's some mobilization that would be added in if you just did them individually, but you're looking right at 65 to 70,000?
65 to 70. Please tell the public, what's the amount for the calming devices that you will be putting in place?
Mayor, the calming devices, most of them are included in the sidewalks, because we are bulbing it out, but they added another probably 10 to 15,000 to the project.
So basically, what we're saying here is that this is nowhere near 900,000.
Mayor, I apologize that that estimate came in high. It was a consultant and us, we looked at it, so it isn't even close to 900,000 or even the 600,000.
Thank you. With these amounts and the length of time we've gone through this project, I think it's reasonable, and I'm in favor. I'm going to support the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Leland. So at this time, I will, after public comments and all that, entertain a motion for this resolution.
Mayor, maybe a quick question for City Attorney Joden. Just process-wise, can we make a motion for the total amount of 949.71, or do we need to make the motion for the original amount and then amend that?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, you could do it that way, assuming there's support for the whole package all at once. I would encourage you to also include the suggested language in there that indicates the reduction of the amounts and the reducing or eliminating the $400,000 from the general fund reserve as part of that motion, if you could.
So Mayor, I will move to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget for the city of Helena by amending Resolution Number 20531 to include appropriations for a total of 949,071 that reflects a reduction for the Beatty Street Trailhead to 450,000, of which 200,000 is coming from open lands and 250,000 from street fund reserve.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Nate.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leland. And now we'll come back to, what's the beta, what's the beta award? Please, go ahead.
Mayor, Commissioners, basically, my whole talk is already, your presentation has already come forward, and I hate to get in the middle of some more public comment that is out there. Just want to put out, or want to present here, is that we ended up having four bids. We bid it in a base bid, additive alternate one, additive alternate two. So the base bid is the trailhead improvements. The additive alternate one was the street with the traffic calming, and additive alternative two was paving the parking lot portion of it. So we had four bids.
Mr. Leland, can you, would someone, hold on one minute. Thank you. Please continue.
And on April 27th, we had four bids. They all came in relatively close. They were extremely competitive and lower than our estimate, which kind of surprised all of us, but it is just a dirt working, dirt-moving project, and that's what these contractors do. So the lowest responsible bidder was Helena Sand and Gravel for 314,697.75, and it is our recommendation to award the base bid additive alternate one and additive alternate two. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Leland. Comments from the commission? No comments? I'll entertain a motion. Do we have any comments from the public on this beta award?
Mayor and Commissioners, I just have one thing that I hope is being addressed, and that things always tend to take longer and cost more than you originally think they're going to. Is there going to be some kind of a cap on this, or what happens if, lo and behold, they run into something up the hill and it's going to cost a lot more than you all are amending in this budget? So I'm just hoping that somehow that's addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Commissioners' comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to award the base aid additive alternative one, additive alternative two of the Beatty Street Trailhead project, city project number 17-01, to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of 314,697.75.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Nate.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Consider, I think we're, are we there? Consider interim city manager employment agreement with Melinda Reed, City Attorney Jordan?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, real briefly.
Would you please wait one minute? I see movement, so. Thank you. I'm sorry. Would you continue, please?
Problem, Mayor. Mayor Collins, Commissioners, you have before you tonight an employment agreement for an interim city manager with Melinda Reed. As the commission and the community is well aware, the city has been without a city manager under contract since February 6th. Chief Hagan and David Knopki have both acted as acting city manager in that time. The commission and the city are in need of an interim city manager with some important decisions and operations of the city upcoming. Staff does recommend, and I should clarify, my language here was not precise in the memorandum, but staff recommends contracting in order to accomplish this, not necessarily with any particular individual. And staff recommends that if you do approve the contract, that it go from March 10th, tomorrow, 2020, through November 30th, 2020, or until the permanent city manager start date, whichever date is sooner.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. At this time, I am... I'm going to, do we have public comments in here? No, no, no. What's that? Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry, we will get to you. I apologize. Can you just, one minute? Thank you. Okay. I apologize, ma'am. We will definitely get to you. At this time, for the employment agreement with Melinda Reed, I'm going to be recommending the appointment of Melinda Reed to serve as interim city manager. In your package, you have a draft contract for the commission to consider. During these past several weeks, I have spoken with each member of the commission about what each commissioner is looking for in an interim city manager and to solicit feedback. We have received recommendations from community members. We have received communications from individuals in Helena and across the state that will be willing to serve as interim, and individual commissioners have put forward suggestions. It is my recommendation today that we move forward with Ms. Reed. I have been impressed with Ms. Reed's experience running the Friendship Center here in Helena, her management experience, and her commitment to building strong relationships in the Helena community. I want to thank Ms. Reed for her willingness to serve in this capacity. What the commission has before it is my recommendation. This commission, as a full body, will need to take action to appoint an interim city manager. So with that, I would like to ask Ms. Reed to come up and introduce herself and provide any statements she would like to give. Following that, I will open it up for questions from the commission, and then we will take public comments prior to any motion. Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Melinda Reed. Do I need to give my address also?
Yes, please, for the record.
925 Strawberry Drive. As the mayor indicated, I was the director of the Friendship Center for nearly five years. I've just returned to Helena after being abroad for nearly two and a half years. I'm honored to have been asked to consider this position, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
At this time, we'll turn it over to the commissions for any questions or comments. Any commissioners?
I do have a few comments, Ms. Mayor. Article 2, Section 8 of the Montana Constitution says, "The public has a right to expect governmental agencies to afford such reasonable opportunities for citizens' participation in the operation of the agencies prior to the final decision, as may be provided by law." I'll be frank, tonight, it's unfortunate that after nearly two months of city staff stepping up as acting city manager, that tonight's meeting is the first opportunity we've had to discuss the hiring of an interim city manager publicly and as a whole commission. There has been no public discussion about what qualifications we are looking for in an interim candidate and which candidates have risen to the top of those who have submitted applications. It was my understanding that we were to have that discussion last Wednesday at the administrative meeting. I had hoped and believed we would have the opportunity to have this discussion publicly before tonight and before a contract was extended to any particular candidate, but as you all know, that did not happen. I trusted that we would have a public discussion and that we, as a whole commission, would discuss the qualifications necessary, the needs of the city, and the acceptable candidates prior to extending any contract to any applicant for this interim position. My disappointment has very little to do with the candidate selected outside of a public meeting and everything to do with this process. We very well may have ended up with the same or similar candidate if the commission had engaged in a public conversation among the five of us, but that opportunity never appeared because that conversation never happened as a whole commission. I think the most accurate description of my first two months can be summed up in a Norman Rockwell illustration depicting a game of telephone that hung in my grandparents' house a few blocks from this building. Within my first two months on this commission, I've worked to balance the style of interaction of the past commission with my commitment to improving transparency. I've tried to balance building relationships and I've tried to balance building relationships and consensus with my fellow commissioners while remaining open and honest with my constituents. This process, or lack of process, in hiring an interim city manager has put those two things, the norms of the past commission and the democratic value of transparency in government, on a collision course. I'm not a lawyer, so over the past week, I've started researching to figure out whether my understanding of the public's constitutional right of participation was somehow faulty. Interestingly, during that research, I found that as a best practice and in order to be in compliance with Montana's open meeting laws, elected officials should refrain from discussing and making decisions about matters affecting the city with the other commissioners outside of the properly noticed meetings regardless of whether a quorum is present. In fact, the presence of a quorum is not the sole determining factor of whether open meeting laws are triggered. If two commissioners are discussing city business in a manner that deprives the public of its right to know, observe, or participate, an open meeting law violation has occurred. It is our job to honor the open meeting law at all times regardless of the presence of a quorum. All commissioners are bound to ensure decisions and discussions occur in open session. Elected officials may discuss items prior to the meeting, but those discussions must be done in a manner that preserves the public's right to know and does not predetermine the outcome of an issue. I would argue that that outcome of today's vote has been predetermined. The commission has painted itself into a corner by putting off a public discussion until the very last minute while pushing up against critical decision deadlines for whomever the interim city manager is to be. We must insist on deliberations in an open and as a full commission. Thus, I will be advocating that the commission use this situation as an opportunity to implement policies and procedures that avoid ambiguity and confusion for the public and for the commission in the future. Finally, I'd like to thank city staff who have proven to be consummate public servants and persevered to provide stability despite the many challenges that we now face. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, I mean, I also have a statement. I think you were asking if we had any questions for Ms. Reed, so rather than make her stand there through our comments, I wonder if maybe we should just take public comment and then we can.
Okay.
And I also have a comment, but I want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to weigh in before we do.
Okay. Ms. Reed, would you just, there's a seat there then, would you? Okay. So we were allowed the public to make the necessary comment, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, City Commission. My name is Mavini Hoyer. I live at 4412 Prairie Drive. You have done phenomenal work at the Friendship Center. Phenomenal. I come here because I see, I was born and raised here. I was born and raised on the west side of town. I've seen growth become exponential, but I also see the transparency of our government has faded. I do, I am a small business owner, and what you all walk by, drive by every day, I see. I'm sorry that the chief of police isn't here. We have an exponential homeless problem. Do you realize that there are people sleeping on the streets that you walk by every day? Probably not. I, as an Uber and Lyft driver, see it every day. I have taken five people from St. Peter's Hospital to their prospective corners in Last Chance Gulch, in the walking mall, where their cups are. I have seen there are five transients camped out right next to the highway patrols where they put all their vehicles coming in to be dressed. In the off-ramp taking interstate north, there's that new field, there's transients camped out there. There's transients camped everywhere, the city police aren't moving them, the sheriff aren't moving them. My question is this, we have the coronavirus epidemic that's gotten everybody crazy, but my biggest worry is, what about human feces, airborne pathogens, HIV? We don't know what these people are carrying, but they're dumping this in open fields, in waterways that are used behind Ross, behind Pizza Ranch, behind the New Sears Store. As a small business owner, I'm a taxpayer. I don't want to see these hidden agendas. I watch the paper, I read it vigilantly every day, I watch the news every day. I am tired of seeing everybody scrambling to make an excuse or to fix somebody else's mistake. That's not what you were elected for. You were elected to service our voice. We expect you to do what we hired you to do. We're not hard to live with, but we don't see spending money foolishly. Helena is dying, and it's not because of the internet, it's because of the fact that this town is 15 years behind. We are very close-minded in this fact that we love our open space and we love our small-town feel, but in the same aspect, if we don't bring industries in to bring income in, we don't have affordable housing. If somebody tells you that we do, we don't. Single mothers work two jobs to pay $1,100 a month. That's not including their groceries, because a lot of them don't do SNAP. They don't get help with daycare. We got to do better. We're not doing anything except chasing our tails. We hired everybody to do a good job, and some are, but some aren't. And I am that voice for the people in this town, in the valley. I've had my home for 20 years, and everybody's encroaching out there wanting to take my well and my septic because they want to make it city. No. I don't, I'm out of the city for a reason. I like my peace and quiet. But please don't spend the taxpayers' money frivolously. Don't take and hire people on a whim or fire people on a whim. Do everything in a documented manner with that transparency that we asked for. And look at the homelessness that we have. I picked up eight transients today from the bus depot and took them to God's love. If you have money for a bus ticket, then stay where you are and find a job and find a home. Don't come here. Our drug problem is exponential. I worry about not only my children, but my grandchildren and their children. And I want to see our commissioners and our mayor do more than what's being done, and I would like more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and I apologize if I wasn't clear enough. At this time, we're talking about considering the employment agreement of Ms. Melinda Reed. There will be time for public comments after this, and when I ask for public comments, I'm talking about this particular topic right now. So if you have any comments concerning this topic, please step forward.
Mr. Mayor, the Commissioners, I am Carol Bondi. I live at 200 South Harris Street in Helena, and I thank you for all of your good governance of our city, but I have a concern in you voting for an employment contract today. I have been reading the independent record, which has been doing very good investigative journalism and has raised some issues about the sharing of information, the collecting of suggestions for the interim city commissioner, city manager position, and I don't, I am not here to talk about the candidate at all, I am here to talk about the process. I believe that you need to spend more time on the process to make sure that all of the commissioners have the same and a total picture of the information available about these candidates and that you take into consideration the suggestions of all the commissioners and everyone who makes suggestions to you. I ask you to step back and not make a decision yet until you have an inclusive process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Step forward, sir. Oh.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. For the record, my name is Commissioner Susan Goodgeese, Lewis and Clark County. I want to make clear to everyone present that I am here today as a lone commissioner with absolutely no power. Commissions act as boards, not as individuals. I need to tell you that I have not consulted with my colleagues about this issue, as that would have constituted an unnoticed and hence illegal meeting. They don't even know I'm here. I am not speaking for the county, I am but one commissioner asking questions on behalf of our mutual constituents. I say mutual constituents because the City of Helena residents are also Lewis and Clark County residents. Four months ago, 10,381 Helena voters, and that number comes from the combined totals of candidates Painter, Dean, and Logan, who all ran on demanding increased openness and transparency in city government. I believe that the commission would do well to heed the voters' voices, and I urge the commission to be more open with the public. My questions arise from people who contact me at the grocery store after mass, when I'm gassing up my car, or just walking, waiting at Park Avenue Bakery to get a treat, which I probably shouldn't have. But my point is this, that your constituents and my constituents, our shared constituents, are questioning me and I have no answers. Further, my questions were really sparked during the recent March 5th IR article where it came as news to me that it appeared that an offer had been made to Melinda Reed, and I want to make very clear that this, my comments have absolutely no reflection of any sort on Ms. Reed. If she is selected, I have no reason to believe that she would be anything other than excellent. But that is not my point. Please give Ms. Reed or any interim city manager a level playing field as they start what will be an exceptionally challenging task. Do not burden the new interim manager with any questions about the legitimacy of the process that resulted in their employment. These questions that I have for you require no research, and they can be answered simply here tonight, and I hope, as I've been watching your process, that you don't generally respond to questions. So perhaps some commissioners might follow up and be able to press the issue. These are questions that I have regarding the interim city manager appointment. There are 11. One, was there a committee composed of commissioners and staff appointed to screen and interview candidates? Number two, was a job description used to question and score applicants about their experience or ability to determine suitability? Number three, how many applicants were offered interviews based on their qualifications? Number four, did any applicants have previous experience with city government, in particular the City of Helena's government? Number five, was there an opportunity for all commissioners to be able to give input in a publicly noticed meeting? Number six, what commissioners and staff met with the successful candidate or presumptive successful candidate? Number seven, when was the decision made to offer the position, as I understood from the paper that probably had been, since Ms. Reed was comfortable in giving an interview? She's a very intelligent woman, I'm sure she probably had something to go on that perhaps that position had already been offered. Number eight, who participated in the decision? Number nine, who made the offer? If the city contract was drawn up by the city attorney, who directed him to do that? And when did that offer occur? Regardless of any perceived deadline to appoint an interim city commissioner, that date seems to be not as crucial as reassuring Helena's citizens that this commission's actions are open, transparent, and legal. On behalf of our mutual constituents, I respectfully ask the Helena City Commission to answer these questions prior to taking action on this hire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please.
Yeah, my name is Eric Froston. My family moved into this town about 1966. My father wanted to live near his stepbrother, basically, who ran what is now Helena College for years and years. It was more of a technical school back then. I am very adamant against an immediate hiring of this particular person. I'm going to federal court, and we're going to go for personal assets and criminal charges. Here, you can pass these out to the people. Real serious mob activity. Kennedy was murdered to ramp up the Vietnam War. The Warren Commission was a whitewash. Oswald was a patsy. They murdered my dad. They murdered this guy, I was talking to him at Starbucks about bringing down Danes for computer hacking. He got paid off by the defense contractors, and then he murdered that doctor guy as a death threat against me in the Kmart parking lot, right across from the post office. They murdered three people to get me out of where I live now, and one of them was this guy, Noonan. There's a guy that lives right across the street from me, Killer Phil. I was living in Rhode Island. I belonged to the same ocean club that Billy Joel belonged to. He wrote a song, mentions Killer Phil in the song. That guy has probably murdered maybe between four and eight people of a Catholic church. He stalks them, if it looks like they're going to support balancing the federal budget, he murders them. Noonan. I asked, begged the police chief, go arrest that guy for repeatedly violating the restraining order. No, he wouldn't.
Mayor, if you, if we could keep the conversation relevant to the topic at hand, it might help us move along.
The relevancy is, it's documented in here.
Okay.
She ran the Friendship Center. Jenny Eck was Hillary Clinton's campaign person for Montana. She was involved in the murder of my dad. My mom, right now, is over there at the nursing home, Hunter's Point, addicted to drugs. She wants to get out. The mob's taking care of her. She can't. Something's going to be done. I tell you, these federal courts are really going to step in, and we're going to go for personal assets and criminal charges.
Thank you, sir.
Probably in front of the general high tree, then playful carriage.
Gina Satterfield, 1315 Charlie Russell. On the hiring, Ms. Reed, I'm going to say I'm going to think about all of the cities that have had a city manager, that are Portland, Oregon, San Francisco, Seattle, and the list goes on. goes on. Now, I see that Ms. Reed was the program director of the American Refugee Committee in Minnesota, renamed, all right, is responsible for bringing in 3.5 million refugees, and director, executive director of the Women's Initiatives for Gender Justice. I know that I jumped you, Sean, and I'm going to apologize to you in front of everybody that I took what you said of being a perfect fit, or a good fit, that she would be a good fit, and to you, Emily. The reason why I say that is if we're going to keep going onto this political correctness road, then we are going to end up like those cities where we have a tent city, maybe on those white sidewalks that are going to be on Rodney, where I have a business, or we're going to have people spending the night up there on Beatty, and it's going to continue to get worse. Now, we have a problem here in this town. I do not want people sleeping out on the street. It breaks my heart. I think we should do something about it, big time. I know a lot of good people on Rodney, and I know, once you bring this mess in, they're not going to have a place to stay. Think about all the people that are homeless, and you're going to bring someone in, and I'm sorry, Ms. Reed, but I would say this to anybody, I was hard on the last manager, and she deserved it. But you guys are not working for the people. You're working for the public-private partnerships, the stakeholders that don't even live, probably in Montana. So they don't give a rat's rear in about us, any more than Melinda and Bill Gates. We're flyover country. They would like to have us eliminated. So think about this, everybody. Make sure you have your input in, because if you don't, make it hard on these people. This is their job. Make it hard on you. I'm not picky. I'll pick on everybody. I want you to see it. Visualize what we're going to look like once everybody comes into our state, and we have to feed them, house them, clothe them, but it's going to be too expensive, so you're going to be out on the street anyway, and that they have more rights than us, and my gosh, I'm sure that they'd be able to roam upstairs, or up to the Beatty Street area and hang out in front of somebody's house. And I bet you they wouldn't all use the same bathroom.
Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Kirsten Madsen, 703 Eighth Avenue. I am the immediate past president of the Board of the Friendship Center. I worked with Melinda throughout her tenure at the organization. I think she has exactly the management skills that this position requires calls for in this particular time that we're facing as a, as a community and as a city. She's excellent at changing and challenging situations that are dynamic and that need to be addressed, both urgently and in terms of building capacity for what's going well and how can we continue to spread that type of relationship and energy throughout the organization. And I think that she is perfect for this job. I think you're lucky she applied, and I'm very glad to see her back in Helena. And I support her selection if that's the choice you make. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Collins and Commission members, for the record, I'm Kel Sen Young. That's K.E.L.S.E.N.Y.O.U.N.G. I will admit, I am an East Helena resident proudly, but I do work here in Helena, actually just down the street at 7 West 6th Avenue. And I just want to say that I've known Melinda for several years now. My organization that I work for is actually the statewide organization that works on similar issues, of which the Friendship Center is a member. And when I saw that Melinda was willing to stick her neck out and offer up her services for this position, I, I made it worth my time to come down here and tell you about the candidate. We've heard a lot about process tonight. I'm here to speak to why I think Melinda would be a great candidate for this position, and why I think we should feel grateful that she's willing to do the work. As the previous person spoke to, she is someone who works well under pressure, managing lots of different roles, certainly understands the issues in our community that many of the people have spoken about, as someone who does direct services and who has done direct services with the homeless population in Helena. And so I just strongly encourage you to consider her for her credentials and her wide-ranging experience, and that she's willing to contribute to our community in this way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and for the Commissioners. For the record, my name is Darren Gobbe. I live at 524 Eighth Avenue, just a few blocks from here. So I'm clearly a resident of downtown Helena. I recently retired from the U.S. Army after 28 years of service, and excited to be back in Montana where my family settled four generations ago, and now we are five generations deep here. One of the reasons we chose Helena as our retirement location was the fact that service is my passion and getting involved in Montana's political leadership scene was a way to fulfill that passion, and take advantage of my years of experience in leading thousands of people in many billion-dollar budgets, building teams of experts and working together to pursue these tough problems. You could say that my career in many ways has been defined by tackling tough problems around the world, and I've loved doing it. And I'm growing to now appreciate the fact that Helena has many of its own challenges. So as I moved here, I watched the removal of Anna Cortez. I watched the attempt to bring in Ed Meese, and the current plan to bring in Ms. Reed for the interim city manager position. Through it all, you've had multiple opportunities to fix this problem in a temporary measure, in some ways in a permanent measure. Instead, you seem largely focused on trying to figure out ways to circumvent the people of the city and pursue your personal agendas. If that's something that fits what you're doing, please understand I'm not addressing all five people, but those who are partaking in this. And for years, I've traveled the world and seen the constant face of cronyism, nepotism, and the experience in traveling the world now makes it easy to see these same problems anywhere I go. And this is not an indictment at all about Ms. Reed's experience or qualifications. She may be the choice of the commission. The people of the city may love her. She may do a superlative job if chosen. You've had people stand up here and tell you that she would. No reason to doubt that. Again, this is an indictment of the process that this commission used to get to this point in hiring a city manager. You've kept half of your own commission in the dark. You've constantly advertised what you're going to do in a manner that limits inputs from citizens. Your meetings are announced with little time to respond at times of the day when most people at work are unavailable, or sometimes they just don't even happen, short notice, and we are surprised. In my opinion, this is a clear case of cronyism, taking care of somebody that we know because they're friends of the commission. So to summarize, you pushed out half your own commission, held secret meetings in view of the public, out of view of the public, in with other commission members only. You kept the people of the city in the dark and reached a conclusion without any competition. You blindly charged forward, thinking this is all okay and hope nobody is paying attention, but we are. And as you can see tonight, many of us are paying attention. I had a list of questions that was very similar to those already read, so I won't repeat them. Again, I've spent many years overseas, Central Asia, Pacific Rim, Africa, and much of Europe. Many places, I fought to root out corruption and their influence of power peddlers who once elected or selected tried to act and lord over people as if they are the unaccountable royalty. Now I come home only to find that I must continue this same fight here in the small town of Helena. So I would ask you, as you hear tonight, many people talking about why this is an indictment of a process and not a person, get your process straight so whoever the person is that you select, again, does not, like has been mentioned, have to fight back against why that process was bad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner, my name is Denison Rivera. I live at 685 Legend Loop, Apartment 112, Helena, Montana. And I'm before you today because I'm really concerned. I'm really concerned what's happening with this city. I'm a small business owner here in Helena, been here for the last four years. I wasn't born and raised here, but when I came to Helena, I fell in love with Helena. I fell in love the way the people are, the way we do business. But unfortunately, I'm not in love with the government. I'm not in love with the way things are done here, the lack of transparency, the lack of the responsibility to the people, let me know what's happening. Now, my comments are not towards currently the new commissioners, because they just started, and they haven't had a chance to prove themselves. But Mayor Collins, I'm familiar with you. I've met with you several times, and unfortunately, I never had a chance to meet the other commissioners. You guys seem to be very unavailable, and I'm sure you guys are busy. But the point being is that this whole ordeal from the city manager and to the current, to the current person that you're considering as a candidate to be the interim city manager is a huge mistake. I mean, how could you guys think of ignoring two other commissioners? I don't think this is unwise, or perhaps, perhaps to say that this is just pure corruption, is it not? I mean, what else can you call that? What else can you call the fact that you don't meet with two other commissioners that 10,000 people voted for? How is that right? How can we take Ozes' office and say, you know what, we're going to go and meet aside? And I don't really know if you did. I would like to ask you questions and to ask you, hey, who actually gave permission to the city attorney to actually create, draft a contract for the city interim manager? Who actually gave permission? Who actually set the agenda? Who actually did all the, all the questions that the county commissioner asked were just valid questions? I mean, she took it straight from the horse's mouth. I mean, I just have no other way of asking, but are you actually going to answer these questions? Are you going to actually spend the time, ask and answer these questions about who actually set this whole process and why you guys did these things that you did, the way you did them? I mean, this isn't right. This isn't right. And I, and Mayor Collins, I feel like you're a reasonable man. I feel like you would do the right thing if it's shown to you that, or proved to you that, that this is just wrong. And I just don't see how you could be in agreement with this kind of process specifically. I have nothing against you personally. I think we have, we run in many of the same circles, but I just don't see how you can agree with this kind of process where two city commissioners are ignored and put to the side. When I give consultation to my clients, I'm all about foundation. There has to be an order to things. There has to be a right way of doing things, and this isn't right. Melinda Reed, I don't know you personally. I have nothing against you. I don't know if you're the right fit for the city or not. I don't know, I'm not familiar with all your history with the Friendship Center, but I would implore you to not take this position specifically. I would implore you not to get involved until they do their things the right way. I have a strong belief, or perhaps it's a saying or a quote, I can't remember, that the way you start things is the way they end. Things went wrong with the last city manager, unfortunately. Don't start things the wrong way again. And Melinda, I don't think you want your legacy with such a great reputation. I hear from others that, that speak so well of you, you would want to start this way of the city, with the city. You're going to have people that are going to be against what you're doing, and not particularly against you, against this process.
Mayor, may I just, comments should be directed to the commission, and I think that would be helpful clarification, that the public comment needs to be directed to us.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I could definitely do that. It's not a problem. But I would, again, implore the commission to, to actually get your things in order. I implore you guys to actually do the right thing. I don't know what the issue is. I don't know what, what problem you may have with Commissioner Logan and Commissioner Dean. I don't understand perhaps why you guys can't work together or meet together and just discuss these items. It's supposed to be a nonpartisan commission where it's not about what's happening nationally or what's happening statewide. It's about the City of Helena. It's about the people who live here. It's about people that you see every single day. And I know this is hard. It's not easy talking to the mayor and someone I see often, and people I see around town, and saying these hard things, because it's not, it's not easy for me. It's not, it's not something I really want to do, but someone has to say something. And that's why I spent my time, that's why I came tonight, ignored a lot of things I should be doing. I think my wife is mad at me outside. But point being is that I want you guys to do the right thing, and the best way for you guys to do the right thing is to not go through this process right now. Wait, hold on. Mr. Mayor, I would implore you, I think you would be the swing vote here, in my opinion, but I would implore you, don't, don't go through with this. Don't go through with this. Wait. Do it the right way. That way, her reputation isn't tarnished, your reputation isn't tarnished, and you can start doing things the right way. I think it's just a really solid, logical thing to do. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Comments from the commission?
Mayor, I have a few comments. So I appreciate all the work that's taken place. I, I think that, you know, we have gotten a lot of feedback from members of the public since January about the interim position, and I think what are, what are important qualities that, that we should consider. When, you know, I appreciate the mayor's recommendation of Ms. Reed, and appreciate the feedback that we've gotten since, since noticing this, this agenda item. I thought it would be helpful to read some of those. I know these went to the full commission and the press, but I think it's helpful just to kind of share some of the, some of the perspective that we've got from, from members of the public and a number of community leaders. I've had the pleasure and honor of working with Melinda and consider her highly capable, professional, knowledgeable, friendly, and dedicated. Her work history is both extensive and impressive. Melinda is a determined woman who knows how to problem solve, work with others, and get the job done. Her dedication to building community bridges is inspiring. Ms. Reed has great success bringing together different perspectives through cross-agency trainings and meetings to build collaboration and understanding that strengthened our community. We've heard from several former city commissioners that have had experience with Ms. Reed. We've heard from members of, of local law enforcement that shared their perspective that Melinda has been a wonderful person to work with. She's smart, balanced, pragmatic, and collaborative. She will listen and execute, and she is a leader in our community. I think we are incredibly fortunate to have someone of Ms. Reed's caliber willing to serve in this temporary capacity. We, I think, I think each member of this commission has communicated that there is a, a need to move. We need an interim city manager. There are a number of decisions that need to be made, and I think the staff has done an incredible job stepping up, but, but we need a leader in this interim capacity. We also have a considerable amount of work ahead of us in, in moving forward with a process of, of finding a permanent city manager. So I think that it's important for us to, to move forward with this, and I just cannot, I cannot stress enough how much I appreciate those that have, have submitted, you know, a letter that they were, that they would be interested, or recommendations of others in the community, and really just so appreciate Ms. Reed's willingness to, to step up in this capacity. So I hope we can move forward today, and I think that, you know, I've, I've appreciated the, the feedback that we've gotten over the past several days from
More town council members are going to be murdered by Killer Phil.
From many leaders in this community.
Yeah, by Killer Phil.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, continue, Commissioner. Oh, you're done. Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there is anything more important than we can, that we can, as a commission, do in this coming year as to select a good city manager. And I think that one of the first steps in doing that is the selection of an interim city manager. But there's a great deal about this process that I don't understand, how we arrived here tonight. Commissioner Dean and I were not a part of many decisions that were made about the selection of an interim city manager. Going back to the contract offered to Ed Meese, to the canceling of the public discussion about whether or not to accept that contract. After that, a decision was made, by whom I don't know, to accept material from interested individuals through our Human Resources Department. At last Wednesday's administrative meeting of the commission, there was an expectation on the part of staff and of at least two commissioners that we would be publicly discussing the merits of those individuals who had expressed interest through that part of the process. At that meeting, when the agenda item interim city manager status discussion was considered, we were told that the public discussion would occur at tonight's regular meeting. Again, who made that decision, I don't know. The next day, we found out the agenda item for discussion at tonight's meeting is whether or not to approve a contract to Melinda Reed. Not a discussion of the entire commission about the individuals who might be considered for interim city manager in moving forward. There were at least two commissioners who were left out of that decision as well. This is not transparent governance. So I guess for me, the bigger question this evening is, is this how we are going to do business where some members of the commission are privy to decisions and others not? The answer to that, of course, is no. And Commissioner Dean and I could be incensed about having been left out of much of this, and rightly so. We are duly elected representatives of the citizens of Helena. But really, the larger issue here is that the public has been deprived of its constitutional right to participate in their government, and the public has been deprived of their right to know of the deliberations of their government. The public and the press have a lot of questions, and they are demanding a transparency that we can't seem to deliver. In 1984, Walter Cronkite told us, "A democracy ceases to be a democracy if its citizens do not participate in its governance. To participate intelligently, they must know what their government has done, is doing, and plans to do in their name. Whenever any hindrance, no matter what its name, is placed in the way of this information, a democracy is weakened and its future endangered." This is the meaning of freedom of the press, and it is not just important to democracy, it is democracy. So on January 2nd of this year, in this space right before us, Judge Menahan administered an oath to us newly-elected municipal officials. In that oath, we solemnly swore to support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Montana, and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Helena. We further vowed to discharge these duties of this office with fidelity. That oath means a great deal to me. I intend to the best of my ability to honor that oath. So in terms of the matter that is before us this evening, I can't support this, not necessarily because of the individual, but because of the process that brought us here this evening. We can and must do better for the citizens of Helena in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I'm glad we're moving forward with the decision on interim. I think we have to do it at this point. I, for many reasons, am a little bit confused on some of the comments made by fellow commissioners, given that, you know, in conversations that I have had with them, they've been supportive of Ms. Reed in this process. I appreciate you making this recommendation to us, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that we had this hearing tonight. I'm excited for Mrs. Reed to take over. I am excited to give Mr. Knopki a break. I think the city needs to move forward. I'm looking forward to our full, full-time manager process, and I'll be supporting this
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other last comments?
Mayor, would you like a motion at this point?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve the interim city manager employment agreement between the city of Helena and Ms. Melinda Reed.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Nay.
Commissioner Logan?
Nay.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
At this time, we have, and is there anyone from the public wants to address the commission?
Greetings again, Mayor and Commissioners and
Hello.
...community of Helena. I'm Brian Copeland, 1610 Hudson Street. Over the last 30 years, I've been an advocate on the front lines in a war against poverty, injustice, and homelessness in our community. I've been in the front lines providing advocacy and performing warm handoffs to people in the community that are falling through the cracks. I'm the last line of defense for the lost and forgotten that don't fit program parameters, whether state or city or county. And so these people call me on my helpline that I've ran for over 30 years in this community. And I do go to them, I do forensics to find out what their problems are, and I take them to who in the community can help them out with. And I've been providing these people with warm handoffs. And I've been basically running a mobile crisis response unit for over 30 years. And I created a database that would help me match people to programs and programs to people, and I created a web portal interface that was active on the Internet from 2005 till 2016. In 2017, we had a community gathering where about 40 homeless service providers, who each had a different niche in the community, all came together from city, state, county, and federal. And we came up with a proposal on what to do with just our homeless crisis for the next 20 years. And we had a plan, and we were supposed to stick to that plan. And hopefully, the commissioners will write down these four important points, because this is what the coordinated entry system was supposed to be all about. The first thing was access. The second thing was, sorry, my head injury is blowing up right now, and I have PTSD, so it's kind of hard to run off all this information right off the top of my head. But the second one was assessment. The third thing was assignment. And the fourth thing was accountability. Now, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. And most of the community partners and collaborators have been told that this is a strong chain. Now, if you actually were to examine this, you'd find out that it's plastic. The material that this is composed of is plastic, and the case managers and the peer support specialists and the people that are in the trenches cannot use this to pull people out that are stuck in the ditch. So over the past few years, the system has been shoot the messenger, because the leadership doesn't want to hear that it's not working in the community. Because this original system, this coordinated entry system, got wordsmithed and got changed a little bit, and everything about it fell apart. People aren't getting access, there's no collaboration. All the people that came to this community gathering and designed a structure, and I have a 12-page report sitting right on me right now, that there's very few copies of this out there, but this is, was our blueprint on what we were supposed to do and how we were supposed to do it. And it's all timed. I mean, I have fragments of it, but a new digital copy needs to be requested and brought forth and submitted to the thing so we can get this train back on track, because this track was derailed. Currently, this last Monday, I was at our place, which is the front line of this battle and this war on poverty and this war on homelessness and all these injustices and all this that's going on. And so I was at this meeting on Monday on our place, and I was told by the manager there that a veteran had been dropped off with no coat and no shoes. Now, this is supposed to be a walk-in center or a place that when people are dropping them off, there's supposed to be people there helping them to assist in the transition. And now this guy wasn't just assisted into there, he was just dropped off at the front door. And hopefully, I'm not the only one that's appalled by this situation. This isn't the first time that I've heard about this.
Mr. Copeland, would you wrap up your comments, please?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to do this because I'm struggling to try to prevent myself from having a panic and anxiety attack. I mean, I've got black mold poisoning in my lungs. I can barely walk, and it's really hard to stand in front of a commission to talk to you about the problems that are in our community and the fact that we gotta do something about it. I mean, my name's been out there for a long time. I've been running a help desk for over 30 years in this community, and I've been dealing with some other agendas that have been basically a character assassination, and I've been isolated and stigmatized myself. So I implore all the commission members to give me a call and to sit down and to look at really what's going on. I have a copy of this blueprint, and you all need to see this, because we need to get this back on track, because it is not happening. And this, you know, is supposed to be a metal chain, it's not. This is what's being sold, that everything happening. It's not a well-oiled machine. There's fallout all over the place, and if you don't do something about it, we're gonna have some more serious crises. If nothing's done, your drug crisis, I mean, if nothing's done for the homelessness crisis, these people can't get housing, they're gonna take more drugs, and then you're gonna escalate this problem. You have injuries that lead to illnesses if they're not treated. Illnesses lead to infirmities, and the longer and further they go down this chain and this rabbit hole, the more and more it's gonna cost you. This last year alone, I was on eight 911 calls that went to the hospital, and I went with these people to the hospital. So I seen all of these holes in the system and how we're not working together. So, thank you.
Do you have any other public comments? If nothing else from the commission, this meeting is adjourned.